Thank you ma'am. Good evening, everybody. We're gonna get started. I would love that music to continue to play, but I'm afraid you might not hear the very important words that are about to be spoken out of this microphone. I am not the person who's gonna speak these most important words. And by the way, we're gonna talk about a lot of stuff tonight, but by far, the next five, 10 minutes is gonna be the most important stuff. Because we're gonna be focusing on students, their success, and how proud we are. This award, these checks that Alan Williams will present, and the Joint Construction Board will present, are very special to us. Because I gotta tell ya, most members of the Board of Education and many people in this community feel that city school district students are underestimated. That they think we're not as strong in the sciences and the areas that they say other communities excel in. Well, we say no to that. And you give us examples. I'm speaking to you young people, forget your old folks out there. You young people, give us reason to be proud. We struggle, we have struggled in this district. But it's always important to highlight the many, many good things, most specifically, good, positive stories that are coming out of this district. And you, my friends, are those stories. So without further ado, Alan Williams, why don't you come up and share these most important words and examples? Thank you.
Thank you, President White. I'd like to have, and like to introduce two of my other colleagues. The first of whom is Mike Schmidt, who you already know, who is the Director of Operations for the City School District. And his other job, he is the Vice President, or Vice Chair of the Joint School Construction Board. And also, I'd like to introduce Peppin Osiliyan, who is the Vice President of Savin Engineers. And Savin is the Program Director for the School Modernization Project. And Peppin really is a guy who is in charge of all of the construction and the planning for this phase of the project itself. So, yeah, Mike, Peppin, thank you. And first of all, I'd like to have a representative, or representatives from the Rock City Robotics come up. And would you like to give a few words about the Rock City Robotics?
Absolutely. Good evening. Our Rock City Robotics team is our district-wide team for the Rochester City School District. So we have schools such as Edison, School 58, and a few other schools that's participating in this district-wide team. So, thank you, I've already spoken to the mentor earlier today. So, this will be very beneficial for the program. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mike. And on behalf of, on behalf of the Joint School Construction Board, and also one of our partners, who are Savin Engineers, Peppin represents, Gilbeam Construction, the Buffalo Construction Consultants Bargains Associates, Lovella, Millennium, and Watts Engineering and Architecture, we'd like to present the Rock City Robotics with a check for $5,000. And we'll have the real check for you over the next week or so. And also, last, about two weeks ago, we had a presentation by the students from the ExCATS Robotics Team, which was an outstanding presentation. They came in, made a presentation to the, both the Joint Board, as well as our partners. And as a result of that, the outcome was that we, they asked for, and we decided to give them a donation also. But before I make the presentation, I'd like to have Dayton Dixon come up. Give us just a few words about the ExCATS team.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all so much for having us here. I just wanna tell you, you have no idea how much this means to us. Our team has been around since its inception. And over the past years, we found ourselves struggling to figure out how to stay afloat, how to find funding. Just a few weeks ago, we did this fundraiser outside in Brighton to collect cans and bottles. So I was with one of the students. We went to a lady's door, and this lady was so sweet, God bless her heart. She told me, she said she will find some cans and bottles for us so our team could go to Detroit. She said she'll be right back. We waited outside in the cold for 20 minutes. It was freezing. The young man I was with, his hands started turning green. She came out with three bottles and said, "I hope you guys have a great time in Detroit." So the young man went in the car. He was able to warm up while I ran around to the other houses. And I said, "There has to be a better way." Because we keep hearing about how important STEM is. We keep hearing about how important our future is. There has to be somebody that's willing to give us some funds. And then I found out about this opportunity, and we grasped it. So we just wanna tell you, thank you. Thank you all from the bottom of our hearts. Because we have seen what the program has done to so many of our students. We've seen students who are mediocre with their grades, but they finish in the top of their class as a result of being in our program. We've seen students, thank you. We've seen students who probably wouldn't have graduated, but they did because of this program. So we just wanna tell you, thank you. And I would also like to encourage you, in March, when we have the competition. It's gonna be difficult, because the news is gonna be focused on basketball in March. But when we're at RIT, we would like for everybody to come out and support us. Just being there is support. And bring your sons, your daughters, your nieces, your nephews, and come out so they could be as excited about First Robotics as our team is. Thank you guys so much.
I'd like to have the entire team come up, and we'll present you with a check. Okay? For the entire team?
Do you mind if one more student?
Nope, yeah.
My daughter actually has a few words. Twanda Dixon, she's gonna come up and talk for a minute. Thank you. The mic is yours.
Thank you, hello everyone. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity. So, I would like to start off by introducing myself a little bit. My name is Twanda Dixon, and this is my 15th year on the team, believe it or not. So, my dad started bringing me to robotics when I was two years old. And although I couldn't do much on the team back then, it just instilled in me a love for engineering, for technology. And so, by the time I was in fifth grade, I was already making websites. By the time I was in seventh grade, I was helping build a robot. And in 10th grade, I started getting into app development. And there are all these wonderful opportunities that students have been given throughout the years just because of this team and the work that we've been doing. All the students that come through, graduate, and they have wonderful opportunities that are just handed to them because of the work that they've done with us. It's wonderful seeing, after all my years on the team, people coming in and going out, seeing new faces and old faces again. And just seeing everyone having a wonderful time and experience because of what we can provide for them. So, thank you very much.
Before we have the students come up and do the presentation, I think we'd be remiss in not thanking some really incredible people that work behind the scenes and make sure everything is in order. So, some members of my team are Joe Griffin, and Matt Seager, and Tom Kesa, which they put in really hundreds of hours, making sure everything is in order and ready to go. In addition, Principal Vanderwater and Director Vanderwater make sure that everything from their end is organized and hold me accountable to make sure that I have everything in place. And it's not just done, it's actually done to the highest possible standard. And I think finally, and most importantly, Director Neal and Deputy Superintendent Golden for their support for the Rochester team as well. And then all the parents, because I'm behind the scenes, you're taking your students back and forth to weekends and late evenings. And so with all of that, none of this actually happens. So, once we give the check, make sure that all the students here go back and give mom and dad a hug, or a high five, or a hand pound, or whatever you do when you're 17 years old. So, anyway, congratulations.
Again, it was a pleasure to support the team. I just wanted to report that the Robotics Lab is ready. It was done two weeks ahead of schedule. And we met with everybody over there, and they enjoyed the space. Thank you.
And now I'd like to have the entire team come up, and we'd like to present you with this check for $10,000. If I could take one, just one more moment, I'd like to do a sort of special recognition. And Peppin, would you come back? And I said, but Peppin is the Vice President of Savin Engineers. And Savin Engineers is the Program Director for the project. During the first phase of the project, Savin was the, they were the second chair, if you would. They were the partner. In the second phase, this phase now, Savin and Peppin, they are the project managers, the directors. They run the project. And one of the things, two things that they did, that Peppin did when they became the overall program managers, they started something called the BOP Program, which really sought to expand the participation of women and minority-owned firms on the project. And as part of that, what they did, they took $100,000, their own money, to seed a revolving loan fund. And this revolving loan fund was available to women and minority-owned firms who are participating on the project. It's no interest. And within probably 24 to 48 hours, if a minority or women-owned firm needs funding, they can have it. But probably the most important thing, and it'll have an impact on you, the students, is that Savin and Peppin had said, "Look, at the end of the project, the $100,000 that we've put in to the revolving loan fund, we don't want it back. What we will do, we will contribute that money to the City School District in a scholarship fund." So, what I wanna do is make sure that Peppin gets this recognition. And I'd like to... And that really demonstrates his commitment to and love of the students within the RCSD. So, Peppin, thank you again. Thank you.
We have about seven to 10 minutes before our meeting begins, so... Okay. People, get settled in your seats, and we're about to get started. Good evening, everybody. Today is December the 20th. It is now 6:35. And calling this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Again, let's give our parents, our students, and our staff a round of applause for the Robotics Team. Really give us something to be proud of. As we always do, we begin these meetings with a pledge of allegiance. But before we do that, I thought we might just spend a few moments thinking to ourselves, perhaps praying, for those folks that have experienced loss. I just, myself, came from a wake involving a person who many of you know. The wake is actually continuing tomorrow, Constance Mitchell. Many of us would not be here but for Constance. She was truly a trailblazer. And if you have a chance to go to the wake, you'll see some of the evidence of the wonderful contributions that she made. But her family right now, including her daughter, are experiencing that loss in a way that none of us can experience despite the fact we know what she did to this community. So I'd ask that you all just dedicate a few moments today to think about those folks that aren't as fortunate as we are today. Thank you. And now, as we always do, why don't we say the Pledge of Allegiance? And I... And I, I always looking for a young person. I just, and there's a lot of young people in here, but I'm talking about truly young. And I just see, uh, Ruth, behind you, there's this young person, I, right? Come on, let's give him a round of, let's give a round of applause. Encourage this young person to come on up. We need help doing the Pledge of Allegiance. No? We can't get you to do it? There's, okay, there's a, uh, this, from my perspective, this young man looks young to me. Right? You, you young man. How about this young man walking up? Give him a round of applause. He's like, "What?", he's like, "What?", "Me?", "I was just walking." Would you be willing to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance? Well, we can all do it together then. Come on, come on. Well, you just come over here. We need you by the mic. Let's give him a round of applause. We're all gonna do it together, so... Tell us your name.
John Martillo.
Nice to meet you, sir. All right, we're just all gonna do it together. Everybody ready? Here we go. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate you. All right. Next item on our agenda is, we have, we have minutes of meetings that we have to approve. Those are written, a written record of, uh, prior meetings that we've had, so rules require that we, as board members, look at those minutes and review them. And, uh, then we have to vote that those minutes say what actually took place at those meetings. So we have business, uh, minutes from November the 15th and business meeting minutes from, um, November the 26th, actually, it's a special meeting, and November the 29th. Uh, can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Some of them.
And moved by Vice President Powell, seconded by Commissioner Funchess. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, that means those minutes have been officially approved. Um, next item on the agenda is, we, uh, try to make sure we make time for citizens to speak to the board. Now, what you're gonna find strange about this is, people are gonna speak, but we're not gonna speak back. That's because the, the, what the board was trying to do long before any of us got on this board is to make sure that citizens could be heard. No excuses, no explanations, no wiggling around what people, people are allowed to say what they need to say. The challenge, though, is you're only given three minutes. If, if you all could see the agenda that we have, we got a lot of stuff to talk about today. It's very thick. So unfortunately, we have to limit the amount of time that people have to speak because we would never get through this agenda. And when I show you this very heavy agenda, I want you to understand that there are children and staff members and books and computers that we have to get to and discuss and approve. So this isn't just us telling citizens you can't have but three minutes. We're saying you can't have but three minutes because there's a lot of business that is required for this district to operate, for our children to get what they need. So it's not us being rude or disrespectful. It's an important part. Now, I, I will tell you, because I know a lot of people are frustrated, that the minute is so short. So yesterday, we tried something different. Uh, and we're gonna try it again, hopefully, some more in the future. We said to people who came yesterday, it was a specific topic, and the topic was, uh, the search firm. We said, "People are gonna really wanna speak to that." So yesterday, people got to speak without limit. And we had, uh, two speakers and nobody said, "Sit down", no, there was no buzzer sounding. But we can't do that today. We have a lot of business to cover, again, affecting children, so we do have to limit the timeframe. And, and, and I think everybody here appreciates that. So, without further ado, the first thing we do is we let students and community members speak first. Uh, and that's how we're gonna begin today, uh, with, um, and parents. Charles Finley wishes to, he's a parent, and he wishes to speak about the city honors program. Is Mr. Finley here? Charles Finley? All right, next speaker is David Walling. Mr. Walling is going to speak for three minutes about, um, the superintendent search.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. Uh, we've met.
Yes, we have.
And we've met, uh, several times and, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk. I was here last night when there was a, uh, get-together about the, uh, search committee and members were here. And, um, as I left, I had some concerns because the community was invited to attend. The last night was supposed to be a meeting, uh, of, uh, of the community to greet and encounter, ask questions, hear promises of the search firm, and to hear the school board's comments and questions, and to make comments. How many people showed up from the community? I counted two. And, um, as I looked into that, I heard the reason why there was not significant community turnout is because there was a miscommunication. I'm not getting on the community about not showing up because if they knew about it, I'm sure they would have been here. And it was an important meeting because it was a chance to get to know the people that you hired, which is controversial because, you know, I for one and other people don't feel we need a search committee. We can do it with the resources that we have here. But given that, this effort to hire the most important element of the school's leadership team has misfired already. What to do now? Make another apology? No, you need to fix it. So far, this search process is a sham and needs to be done right. What you do as a board to be accountable, you are responsible to fix this misfire of the beginning of this really essential process. Do it over. Start again. Call a meeting for the search firm to come because if the community is not, community is not significantly involved, it's not going to launch well. Reviewing again, and historically, and you know, that a, that it was suggested in the process of this communication, that a grassroots community group be engaged to participate from the beginning of the process. It's still the best idea. They with you can create a search committee that has real relevance. But the group that was selected is called BWP. I still don't know what a really, what the acronym really means. But they were hired, I didn't know they were hired. I've been following this along. And my question is, why are they more desirable than the other dozens of search firms that are in the state or even the country? Other have, I wonder what your process was. So I guess that's my beep to go. I think it's a problem that a search firm without community engagement was hired. And I'm concerned about their coming from a, a area not appropriate, not, that is not relevant to us and that can address the problems of this school district with, and, and utilizing the skills and the people of this community to help that along. So to make it work, we need to do it over. If not, obviously, then, the community does not count. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walling. Next speaker is Clay Harris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
I was one of the, uh, community members that was supposed to be here last night, but, uh, I had some other things, so I would have been three. And, uh, I'm sure other ones would have liked to be here, too. I've been vacillating back and forth of if, if I wanted to come and, uh, speak before you guys again because last month I did, and it's kinda on that same line where the other two board members were here, uh, tonight. We're at a, a crossroads, uh, very significantly in our community. And, uh, I think we need to get it right. We've been needing to get it right, but we really need to get it right, uh, this time in terms of the superintendent search and then in terms of the board members, uh, coming together and uniting for one cause, and the cause is our education of our children. We have, uh, we have failed our children for decades. It's just not the district's fault. It's the community's fault, too. Uh, we all have a, a part to play in it. And I think we really need to take it extremely serious right now. And we need to get it right, and we don't need a superintendent that's gonna be here for one or two years. We need someone that's gonna be invested and concerned. And not that Superintendent Barbara Dean isn't or wasn't. I think, um, which I shared last time when I was here about, I prefer her to still be here, and I still have that position. But the point is, she's leaving, and we have another chance to get it right. And we can't keep going through this vicious cycle and not educating our children. The board members are a very crucial part for the education of our children. And if, if we're too busy, if you're too busy, or you got too many other things going on, and maybe we should take an internal look to see if this is what you would want to do on a long-term basis. Because the children are suffering, the community is suffering. Our poverty rate, our educational rate is, like, at the bottom. We have to change it. It's important. You know, I advocate for Oasis. We're trying to turn that around. People get busy, if they're too busy to meet with, with citizens and community people that are very concerned about the well-being of, of our students, then maybe they need to, you know, move on and find something else they might want to do. But we gotta get it right. And it's imperative that we get it right. Too many of our kids are dying, literally because of the lack of education. Period. That's all I wanna say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Judith Davis. Judith Davis.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, community. Um, I stand here today as a community member, as a taxpayer, and I attended the superintendent search firm's presentation last night. And it's my understanding that the process, in essence, will translate community voice into a stack of eight and a half by eleven paper. When the firm finishes the town halls, finishes the surveys, finishes whatever vehicles they utilize to obtain what the community is looking for in a superintendent, they said that that voice of the people will be converted into this, and it will be given to the board to consider as a part of deliberations. So there's not gonna be any physical presence of a frustrated grandmother, no physical presence of an outraged father, no physical presence of a face drenched with tears. There's gonna be flat pieces of paper in the room at the final table of decision. This is the flaw in the current process being followed by the board. The community's physical presence is not at the table. It's not even gonna be in the room at the final time of decision. Physical presence demands an accountability that flat sheets of paper can't. This is the difference between community input and community participation and engagement in all facets of the process from beginning to end and being at the table and in the room of deliberation. They say insanity is engaging in the same process over and over and expecting different results. It's insanity to once again let sheets of paper take the place of the physical presence of the community. This is what commissioners will hear. This is the voice that commissioners will hear during their final deliberations. It is my, it is my hope and it is my prayer that time really is up for flat sheets of paper representing people.
Thank you, Reverend Davis. John Bliss. John Bliss. And then after John Bliss, we have Josh Mack. Josh Mack.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How y'all doing? Okay, I wanted to talk about something a little different. As I considered the framework, concerns of the district, I reflected back on a consorting with the Center for Education and Economy a while back and some work we did with the Department of Labor around implementing vocational and, uh, academic programs for adults. Many schools across the country are looking, are concerned about the best ways to prepare students for college and careers. But many of the time, most of the time, they don't, can't, can't quite seem to figure out exactly what that means. So the Center for Education and Economy, and I brought some literature for you all, and I brought this to the last administration as well, uh, did a study funded by the Gates Foundation to address this per, this problem. They focused on 500 or so community colleges because approximately five, uh, forty-five percent of students go into, uh, community colleges, and roughly about half of them end up with, uh, certificates and degrees and meaningful careers, and the rest of them move on to four-year institutions. So here are some of the conclusions that we can conclude is that, uh, community colleges are a gateway to college and careers. So as you consider your curriculum refocused and redesigned framework, here's some of the findings for first-year, uh, community college Englishes, English, uh, teachers. Uh, this may surprise you, but community colleges professors did not expect, uh, students to be able to read at 11th and 12th grade level to meet the demands of first-year colleges. For mathematics, the most, uh, math needed in community colleges is elementary and middle school mathematics, and most students enter, uh, community colleges lacking these skills. Courses like Algebra II are only needed to go into courses like calculus and should be offered to students who are pursuing STEM careers. This happens to be less than five percent of America's working population. It is not needed for students going into careers such as carpentry, culinary arts, emergency medical assistance, childhood, et cetera. These students need a different type of math than English. Okay, common course standards call for a deeper understanding of elementary and middle school mathematics. It also calls for non-fictional writing and reading, uh, that encompasses other disciplines outside of what we're doing. Common course standards also leaves, uh, what needs to happen in the upper levels of high school pretty much optional. So in other words, there is no mandate that states that students must take courses like algebra with financial applications, although it's a great course, okay? Implications for teachers. If you look at some of the top performing countries, they require teachers to have a minor in subjects, uh, that they're gonna teach before they're allowed to even teach in primary schools. And we don't do that in the U.S. Uh, so they use the paramath and science and, and, and language and social studies. Some of the recommendations. We must address the way in which these subjects are being taught in primary schools because teachers tend to teach in the way that they were taught and most of the times without an in-depth knowledge of the specific subject matter. We need to develop math and, uh, rigorous math in E.L.A. courses and curriculum at high school level that prepares students to enter into careers and college paths they have chosen outside of STEM, science, uh, uh, technology, engineering, and math. We need to only offer high-level math courses to students who are going into full-board STEM programs and spend more time ensuring that students are mastering elementary and middle school mathematics and English language arts. A conclusion. There are a ton of CASA-approved pre-vocational curriculum and skill traits that are adopted and, and could be adopted and used to develop more rigorous E.L.A. and math curriculum uh, outside of STEM. Also, uh, and it's also, uh, approved by the National Department of Labor. Uh, this curriculum is just as demanding and, uh, useful to students. Uh, this is one example of how we could, in, using the term reset, reset the curriculum framework in terms of how we prepare students for real careers. So in the report that you're putting together, I hope that it is aligned to not trying to fix what's broken, but really geared towards developing entirely new focus uh, that is aligned with preparing students for careers that exist today. And I have some, some summary... And I have some summary documentation for you if you'd like to read it.
Thank you, Ms. Mack. Now, the next item on the agenda is reports, beginning with advisory council reports. But before we do that, I'm going to just sort of change the script a little bit, because the room is still full, and I know after a while, people get kind of tired. I wanted to make sure that we take the time to recognize, while many of you are here who really appreciate her service, Sinead doesn't know that I'm going to do this, and certainly Melanie doesn't know I'm going to do this, to recognize Melanie Funchess. This is her last board meeting. And, you know, we could give you all sorts of fancy plaques, and we do have a plaque for you. We can give you flowers, and we do have flowers for you. But I think to have people lay witness to the appreciation and thanks that we have for you, that probably will, you'll remember that a lot longer than these flowers will last. And I don't know where this plaque is going to go, but if you look at the faces, many of them, people in the community, and a good number of them, staff members who've worked with you, I think you'll remember their faces, and that will serve us better as a gift to you than this plaque or the flowers. Okay? So I'll begin by saying, and again, this is more valuable than the plaque we're going to give you. Personally, Melanie, you've been on this board for just about a year, and this is the God's honest truth, in terms of the work that you did in special education. You took your experience, not only professional experience, but your personal experience as a parent in dealing with this issue, and put it on the line, and threw yourself into it, like I've never seen anybody do that. And I said it before you took on that task, and I'll say it now with the facts behind me. That was probably the best thing that this board has ever done, which is to create that committee, and be blessed that we selected you to serve out that term, because you used that year to help elevate our service to a very vulnerable group of students and families. So I wanted to say that, and if y'all can applaud anytime, because this is the truth. And if anybody had any doubt, I know this is very personal, but that's okay, because this is ultimately personal. If anybody had any doubt about what Melanie was willing to do, day in and day out for our children, bless you, and our families, you saw it the other night. She literally works her butt off, and she didn't change her commitment to the community, the things that she was doing in the community, didn't alter the travel. She continued to travel and still make meetings. She never missed a step. So the flowers, on behalf of the board, you all see them. They're very beautiful. And this is going to sound corny, but this is for real. The service that she offered to us, if you saw it, it was beautiful, absolutely beautiful. So that's what the flowers represent on behalf of the board. I want to thank them. Absolutely beautiful. And the plaque says, "A certificate of recognition presented to Melanie Funchess, presented by the Rochester Board of Education in recognition of your..." Listen to these words, and this is all true. Sometimes you see these plaques, and they don't represent what's happening. Your leadership, stewardship... Let me just stop for a second. The little things are really what count, too. If you ever listen to Melanie, and she don't even know this really moved me, she will always say, let's say we're having an argument, and we have a lot of arguments up here, she will always say, "I've never seen anybody do this, and I have a lot of people that I personally respect, I've never seen anybody do this." She'll say, "If I understand you," when we're getting all uptight and tense, she'll stop the argument by saying, "Wait, wait a second." And she's not even the one in the argument, but in order to bring understanding, she'll say, "Wait a second." I think what she's saying, "If I understand you," that's leadership, that's stewardship. Valuable contribution to the Rochester City School District from January 2018 through December 2018, and there was no break in that service. Thank you, Melanie.
Mr. President, I would like to take a point of personal privilege. I wanted, I was going to do this during my policy committee report, but I'll do it now. I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you for allowing me the privilege of serving the village in this way during this season. I had... I wanted to just take time to say that I've been around a while. I've been in the community a while. People know, I was not a stranger to this building when I came into this role, but I just want to say thank you, thank you for allowing me. I want to say thank you to the board staff. I want to say thank you to the administrative cabinet, to the chiefs, to the deputies. I want to say thank you to safety and security. I want to say thank you to parent engagement. I want to say thank you to finance. I want to say thank you to everybody, because I came in, and by the way, the manner by which I came in, the learning curve was steep. There was a lot to be done, and there was a lot of pressure, and you all rode with me and taught me and gave me what I needed so that I can be effective in what I needed to do. And I just want to say that even though I'm leaving this space, as I have done before, my work with the village, on behalf of the village, is going to continue. I'm not going anywhere. And I wanted to just say that in my time, as brief as it has been, I wanted to leave something with my colleagues. As the adults in the lives of children, everything we do is modeling and teaching. Everything. And it is my hope that in this time, in the time that I've spent with you, that I have effectively modeled for you a way that we can be different. In the work that we did in special ed, we were able to bring alumni, parent, alumni parents, parent advocates, teachers, counselors, administrators, people around special ed, all around the table with equity, and do yeoman's work with equity together to get us to where we're about to go. It is, they are ambitious goals. And I'm not saying that we, that, you know, this, it needed to happen, but I'm not talking about necessarily the what, but I'm talking about the how. We were able to do it. People said, "Well, you know, how are you going to do it?" I want to give a special shout-out to CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, and Zyra and her crew, because we told them that we would be back, and they said, "No, no." And when we came back, y'all stepped up and y'all came to be part of committees, and I just want to say, just thank you. I want to give a shout-out to Keisha Morgan, Director of Special Ed, Executive Director of Special Ed. You my girl, thank you. But what I want you all to hear from me is that we can do this differently. We can be different. As a board, we can be different. As an administration, we can be different. As a school community, we can be different. We can do this. I hope that I have modeled, even in the way we redid policy, changing the order in which we did things, to make sure that we heard the voices of the people who would be most impacted. We can do this. And I just ask, as I go, to let you know, I'm not going anywhere. I'm going back to my seat that's usually right over here. Okay? And I just want to say thank you to everybody and say now that we know, when I leave, I want to hear that, and what I say is, what I heard in what you said. And when you come to those places, I want you to remember me, and remember to say what I heard in what you said, so that we can get, so we can listen for understanding and move forward together as a unit. Thank you very much. Oh, and one other thing. If you need me, call me. I'm not going anywhere. This is my village, and I still have one more child who will be graduating in June, another child with an IEP who will be graduating, ready to go to college, hopefully to Southern University, hoping to mighty Jaguars. HBCU loves! But I'm not going anywhere, and I just want to say that my commitment to this district, to these children, and to my village does not end, it did not start here, and it will not end here. Thank you.
Okay.
Let's keep moving.
Let's keep moving, she says. Student Leadership Congress. Student report?
So on the agenda we had, on the agenda for the meeting we had yesterday, we discussed the Concrete Roads and the Growing Out of Poverty projects and student voice and grant funding. As a senior at School Without Walls, a member of the GIS Scholars and student representative on this board, I am proud to announce that two proposals have been accepted by the Rochester-Munro County Anti-Poverty Initiative's participatory budget project and will compete for funding in January. Both proposals are built upon the School Without Walls Community Service Program that requires each student complete 75 hours of service at nonprofit organizations per year. Both projects add new dimensions to community service, including career exploration, job shadowing, technical training, and work experience. The Concrete Roads project will train students in information technology, explore job and career opportunities at the city of Rochester, and provide support to young males of color. The Growing Out of Poverty project will provide students with technical training, equipment, and financial incentives to support gardening and greening projects across the city at schools, rec centers, and neighborhood sites. We are seeking the support of my fellow board members and ask that each of you promote our proposals with the teachers, staff, students, and parents in the schools to which you are liaison, and ask them to vote for both our projects during the polling period on January 7th to January 28th of 2019. I will be sending copies of the proposal to each of you after the first of the year, and we'll seek your comments and recommendations onto how we can make them a success and how we could continue them beyond the funding opportunity. The second thing we spoke about was student voice and grant funding. Mrs. Pecor gave us an overview of federal grant funding currently used in the district, titles one through four. When she presented the information to us, we really got a sense of how complex the budgeting process is and got an idea of what happens behind the scenes. Mrs. Pecor shared that student input would be, should be, a part of how this district spends these funds, and that SLC will be in contact with her in the future to bring student voice to the table in funding decisions. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Well done. We do not have a report from the Parent Advisory Council, but we should hopefully have one next month. Bilingual Education Council, I think they're here?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Estes, and I'm the Vice President of the Bilingual Council. Midna Gonzalez is the President of the Bilingual Council. She really wanted to read the report tonight. And first, before I start, we have about 15 young people from Edison Tech here tonight First of all, the Bilingual Council would like to say thank you for the opportunity to share our activities and also for moving us up and packed up on the agenda. That really, really helps us a lot. We are the bilingual parents, community-based organization, educators representing and advocating for the educational rights to a quality bilingual education for our students in the district. One of the activities we did during the meeting, our December meeting, we heard from placement office about the upcoming School Selection Expo, and this was very helpful. We also heard from the Program Director of Bilingual Language Learners and about how the program is growing. Next thing on our agenda, we would like to host a toy drive, and we need the district to approve and to support this event using, of course, this facility. We plan to give the toys out at our next meeting, which will be on January 8th, where we will be celebrating the Three Kings. Who do we talk to? How do we get approval? How can we make this event possible? Another thing that we also wanted to keep mentioning was, one of the reasons why attendance for our bilingual council meetings have improved, where we have so many individuals attend, is because we focus on celebrating culture, sharing information, and making meetings more interactive with parents' input. The parent leadership training, called Padres Comprometido, has begun. This is a nine-week series, consists of information about understanding how to better communicate with our children, understanding how to communicate with school counselors, administrator, along with knowing how to get our kids to college. We have two sessions right now. One is at Monroe, which is in the mornings, and the other one is at East High School in the evenings. Both sessions are full. We have a lot of parents attending. Transportation, childcare, and food is provided, and graduation ceremonies will be held on January 2019. We need the district to demonstrate its commitment to parents, parent engagement, by bringing this program to more schools, where it can help parent leadership, the PTO groups and the school-based planning teams or committees. Also during the month, the Bilingual Council has reviewed school data, especially for like the bilingual schools, where we actually saw all the data. And one thing is hearing how bad our students are doing the first marking period, and another thing was seeing how terrible we're doing. We learned how to use the dashboard. We were very disappointed about the academics and the attendance for the first marking period. We would like to know, has the board seen the data? We would like to know, what is the district going to do to change the resources and the support and to bring those academic up? We already know that the result for the first marking period, what are we going to do differently to improve or to change before it's too late for the whole academic year? And I'm just going to mention this. I see, when I saw so many reds, it was, I felt angry, but then I also felt sad at the same time. Like, how can we be there? At the bilingual meeting, we share, and we also continue to remind our parents how important it is for attendance and encourage them to review the child's report card, homework, reach out, and meet their teachers. We know that the students that have newly arrived need extra help in addition to the language assistance. We need the district to put in, in a place, math support for the Bella students that is We can and will continue to remind parents what they can do, but the district must do their part and act quickly to get the students' academics up. We attended the informational session with New York State Commissioner Mary Ellen Elias and the Regents, Mr. Wade Norwood, and also the distinguished educator, Mr. Jaime Aquino. We were there to discuss and review the Rochester City School District report. For my part, I know I took notes, but when I went back, I wanted to watch the video, and there was no video. I took notes, that's all I had, but I really wish we had recorded. It was so important. We have the report, and we were going to talk about the report. There was no videos online, and I'm wondering if there is one, and I just kind of missed Again, this was an important meeting for all parents to hear what's going on in the district. Meeting like this needs to be more accessible, and the district should broadcast it either Facebook Live or YouTube, but it should be accessible for the parents. Just some feedback on what and how the board can do a better job at parent and community engagement. We appreciate the recognition of having a functioning and active bilingual council. We have worked hard and are seeing the results of more parents that are attending our bilingual education meeting. As recommended in the report, we are interested, and we will welcome the opportunity to work with other parent groups, non- with other parent groups, non-Spanish-speaking ELLs. We share a common goal and some of the same challenges. We make this happen and we will need the assistance of both ELL office and the parent engagement to continue. We also attended mayor's event to discuss mayor-controlled school model. So those are some of the activities we have all been going to. And when I say all, it's either all of the bilingual council or one person will go to one meeting, one goes to another, but we're always present. Our next monthly meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 8th at 5 o'clock at the David Gant Center, which is 700 North Street. We will be celebrating Latino tradition, which is called the Three Kings, and all are welcome. That concludes our report. Gracias.
Thank you. Now we're gonna move on to our superintendent reports. Dr. Nelms? Yeah, go ahead. Keep going.
To the, to the parent who spoke about the report on bilingual council, where is she? She didn't leave already, did she? No, no, no. That's not what I wanted to tell her. If she, the, if she's, if she's still here, what I wanted to say is, I do believe that the, I do believe, I do believe that Rochester Axe videotaped, that I, if you, if you send me an email to the, whatever email's on our website, I will see if I can get you a contact for the video, somebody, a private citizen's video, that we weren't allowed to visit, videotape it here in our CSD.
Mr. Eagle, you know, we have allotted, we have allotted time for people to speak. You had time to speak yesterday. This is not the time to do that. I'll give you three minutes. I'll give you three minutes.
This is what's happening. The reason, this is, you probably recognize this as civil disobedience. That's what we're engaging in. This is the kind of stuff that Dr. Martin Luther King and Garetta Scott King and Ralph Abernathy and Negro Abors and Burley Abors and so many others, you know, wrote apart. Same kind of activity that they, that they participated in when the officials, you know, the people who are supposed to represent the community won't listen to them and won't allow an opportunity for genuine, authentic engagement and participation. But you keep telling the community that you can't do this without us. That's the rhetoric. We gotta have everybody in this. We need parents, we need community, we gotta do this together. The board can't do it alone. And then when we try to participate, your behavior indicates that that's the last thing that you want. So we're scared. We are afraid of what we're seeing. We're seeing the status quo. We're seeing more of the same stuff that has happened in this district for years. As, as Mr. Harris said, we spoke, we had a critical point in our development. Some very vital things are beginning, are, are gonna happen soon. Choosing the top leader for the district, the report, it's like some of you have already pitched, first you have against the recommendations and pretty much have said that you're not even gonna consider, you're not gonna implement it in some way. This is about the lives of our children. You're looking at mothers and grandmother's and cousins and mothers and, and we've got a stake in the, in this. We got skin in the game. This has to stop. We can't do the status quo. It's gotta look very, very different. So, but we actually have some civil demands and they are demands, you know, and, and
We want radical acceptance.
So, so if you were...
The state is coming, no matter the way you like it or not. I'm gonna visit in my fifth tent. You know my recommendation is gonna be to all of y'all on that board? You already know what I'm thinking.
Go.
We do this whole thing. And that's the first part about it, the state is already here. They're just waiting to see what you want to do, right? Come to Mr. Williams, my best smirk you got over there, really pissed we are. This is serious, as he said. My grandchildren's future depends on our stupidity. Y'all don't seem to get this thing. My social security depends on these children keep working. So y'all won't walk out with a benefit? And everybody lose? No, I'm not gonna, you know what, before I even allow this to happen, I will hold a cool.
So, so, so the state is here.
It's here.
Exactly, you know, right? But we're, we're paying attention to everybody. We're looking at what's happening down in Hempstead. That guy, Mr. Bill, has been down there for a year and she just reappointed him and I told, people are down there being indicted for investment of money and so forth. The commissioner has not acted. If she's not gonna remove anybody in Hempstead, then if we're gonna, the same thing's gonna happen here, we're troubled. Actually, the, the, if this is gonna be the situation, then the state commissioner herself is in ghouls. She's, she's a part of the problem and this is, but see, and we're not gonna do this for too much, we're on home. See, we asked her, what's different this time? You know, Dr. King's report begins by saying, you know, this is new. It's all been reported, not this time. So we said to the commissioner, you were there, what's different this time? So what she said is, this is the first time the state has been involved. And we asked her, and you, when the resistance comes, and we thought it would come from the union, of course, and it did. Did you see that more basic statement about the community? We had a one-year term. We put this whole thing right back on balance without hesitation. But we, we thought that most resistance would come from you, but it seems like it's coming from you. So we asked you, are you gonna stand strong when the resistance comes? And it's still gonna come from our team. That's why we know that, that this is not really being stirred up.
Mr. Eagle? Mr. Eagle?
So I tell you, I have a man.
All right.
And if you want to be, be, um, you can sit down, we can go on home and so, but we got, we got...
Mr. Eagle, let me, let me, let me ask you this. How long is it gonna take you to do? What's that mean?
We got three demands.
Okay, go ahead. That shouldn't take long.
Pretty straightforward.
Go ahead.
We're sick and tired of this rhetoric about valuing, you know, the community engagement. So we think that you need to do something to indicate that you're serious about that. We're proposing two things. One is that you come into the community quarterly, beginning in January. That's every four months. Go to the northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest, and engage the community, not in a three-minute monologue, right? That's a monologue. When you, it's like we're talking to ourselves. Some people are flipping through papers, sometimes reading, rocking in their chair, talking about being professional. They're not laughing in the back. This board member standing there laughing.
All right, Mr. Eagle, just complete your points. Don't, don't talk about this particular board members. So that's, that's the first recommendation.
Because you don't act like that, if you're serious.
Mr. Eagle? Go ahead, complete your recommendations. All right, we got that one.
Serious dialogue, not monologue, where people share with you their ideas about what we think should be happening in this district and we talk and make some decisions together, real collaboration, that you do it quarterly.
All right.
Beginning in the northeast at Fainillo.
Demand number two.
That's, that's of course part of it. The second part of that same demand is that you do what you said you did last night and you're gonna do more of. Even in these regular business meetings, give people 10 minutes. What the heck can we tell you in three minutes? What can we express in three minutes? I even know a commissioner did a, did a brilliant job, you know? I mean, that's the kind of brain power we gotta put into just communicating with you ideas that we have that you say you value. So you gotta, so extend the time to 10 minutes, even at business.
And Mr. Eagle, let me just, let me just tell you, let me, let me, okay, all right, but let me just tell you, i- if you don't complete these demands, I'm gonna just tell you what's gonna happen. We're gonna, well, you gotta do it soon because what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna recess this meeting and we're gonna adjourn into a smaller room. I prefer to hear you out, but you gotta finish it up.
I'm gonna finish it up.
Finish it up.
Do whatever you have to do and you're gonna do whatever, whatever me have to do. Because this is not a matter of just articulating the demands, we gotta have the agreement.
Well, you're not gonna get the agreement tonight. We'll hear, we'll hear you out. You got two more demands, two more demands. All right. Just wanna make sure. No, 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 no. You, you said you could count to three and I said, I'm sure you can. Let's, let's finish it up. No, no, Mr. Mr. Eagle, Mr. Eagle. I'm, I'm, no, I'm, I'm being very straightforward with you. You had the floor for 14 minutes yesterday and, and nobody stopped you.
That's right, that's right. And even that wasn't enough time.
Mr. Eagle? Mr. Eagle? I'm gonna give you one more minute and we're gonna go into recess. And that would be a shame because we're not gonna hear you out.
Do whatever you gotta do. I could be done if you would be quiet.
Well, no, I, I doubt that because I've tried to let you finish and you haven't. But go ahead, let's see what you can do. Let's see what you can do. Go ahead, go ahead.
That's the first demand that has two parts. The second demand is you get ready to make a critical, critical decision about top leadership. Mr. Harris said it tonight, we were over at City Hall yesterday talking to Carl Carvalho, and I know you know because of the paper. But remember, he served under board of regents for a while. And he looked at me and he said, I don't know what, considering your age and my age, this is the last chance. The man made me think about something I hadn't even thought about. He said, we won't even live to see this done again if we don't get it right this time. And he's probably right. This really is the last chance. This ain't no game. It's gotta look radically different. It's gotta be radically different. So, as you're choosing the top leadership, we're just making a demand that you set a condition in this or a contract that they are committed to four years, that they stay at least four years. We didn't pick that off the top of our head. The research is clear, it takes at least three years to set reform in motion. And so we're going to design that three years to four years. It should be solidified. And, and the idea is, the plan, the idea, the task is to develop a comprehensive improvement plan that no matter who comes here, no matter who it is, that they follow that plan. We gotta stop this nonsense that every superintendent who comes in and you all accept it as valid. It's not valid. It's not sound. I'm the new superintendent, I got a new program, we're gonna do this, but not that. No, we have a comprehensive plan that's guiding the direction of this district. No matter who's in charge, who's the superintendent, the plan is not gonna change. If you take the time and the best recommendations thoroughly and have a serious implementation process, you're right, we can do it, but this, this is not rhetoric. We gotta have real goals, real strategies, real evaluation tools and so forth. So, put in the contract of the next leader that he or she is committed to a four-year agreement. And we don't wanna hear after two years, it's not working out. Make it work. That's what leadership is about, make it work.
Is that it? Is that it? What's that? Are you done? Mr. Eagle? Mr. Eagle? I'm, I'm really, I'm just being straight, I'm about to recess this and, and your, your point won't be heard. Wrap it up, please. This is the last time I'm gonna ask. Wrap it up.
It's also connected to the new top leadership. We will praise you forever as much as we criticize you in terms of the work you did with racial equity. It hasn't been done in this district ever before. And so we believe that that's vital. So we're asking you to acknowledge publicly that individual institutional structural racism is one of the most profound problems in, if not the most profound problems and issues in this rural district and that there will be no substantial progress without addressing that thoroughly. And therefore, the superintendent, the new superintendent must be committed to continue the work that this superintendent started in terms of the real process.
You said? We're set because we're not gonna answer. If you're expecting us to answer, we will recess. I listened to the three demands. Okay. Can I get, can I get a motion to recess? Spend move, second? Second, spend second, all those in favor say aye. 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 Commissioner Funchess, I believe. Let me just take the vote, let me just take the vote. No, no, we don't have to do that. All those in, all those in favor of taking a recess, say aye.
Aye.
Let's take a roll call vote. Commissioner Shepard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallmark?
Aye.
Commissioner Funchess?
Aye.
Commissioner Elliott? Commissioner, Commissioner Powell? We'll recess.